Good afternoon and welcome to the April 15th Planning Commission meeting. Looking around, we do have a quorum. We also have individuals who are here with us, I'm sure, representing the WODA group. If anybody wishes to speak to the Planning Commission today, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth today before the Planning Commission? Okay, I saw lips move, which means you did.
I do.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, moving on, disposition of the April 1st meeting minutes, April 1st of 2021. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to look at those.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second? A second from Chief Pyle, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The meeting minutes have been adopted. Cases, we have, again, coming forward, two cases, case number 21-1. This is Title 41, Crenshaw Green Apartments on State Route 682. Again, I know that we have individuals from the WODA group, but before we get into this, I'm going to turn it over to David Riggs. David, if you want to bring this case forward for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is the Crenshaw Green Apartments. We've done some additional review on the plans, or a few additional minor comments from staff. Last meeting, we talked about whether we, what we were going to do with the lift station and what we, we've been discussing with the WODA group about having that meet the city minimum requirements for sanitary sewer lift stations. There was a couple additional comments addressed on that. Almost everything is, almost all of the comments from staff have been addressed, and we think that the, these additional small comments will be no issue for WODA to complete for You're muted, Mayor.
I know I'm muted. I just saw that. Thank you. Comments, questions from Planning Commission?
So, one comment as I reviewed the drawings, or one statement I want to make. The WODA group is, in fact, doing some work on the pond, is that not correct? Developing a spillway into Little Factory Creek. Am I right about that?
So, I could address that. The existing retention basin out there, I don't believe that they're doing any additional work on that. They are creating, for each one of the developments, a retention basin, or a detention basin that goes into Factory Creek, that will hold the water back, and we require them to do that so that we don't have additional runoff peaks that occur downstream. So, they are, care creating a couple of detention basins, one for each site, and those, those will be developed as part of the project.
Okay. Well, I saw that, but I also thought I saw some work happening on that, the end of the pond, or the existing pond, at the end by Factory, Little Factory Creek. That's not happening, though.
That would be off-site. I don't know if Mr. Garvik is here, he could probably address that, but I think that's an off-site retention pond.
Right.
Yes, sir. This is Chuck Garvik with Chain Engineering. The existing spillway from that smaller pond flows through the Crenshaw Green site. It would actually flow through the proposed building location. So, yes, you are correct. We are relocating that emergency spillway to the backside of the pond, down to Little Factory Creek.
And, and the other question is, with the detention, onsite detention ponds, are they proposing any kind of fence to protect people from getting into those areas? I didn't see a fence line there, but I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
The two proposed ponds will be dry ponds. They, they won't contain, they won't hold water except during a rainstorm, and typically, we typically wouldn't want to see fencing around that. That's gonna, that would be, could be, could be an issue for those, for those ponds. So, they'll typically be dry during normal weather.
Which, from my perspective, is the same as the ponds, say, over by Walmart. And, you know, and they've got fences around them, and I almost feel like the fences are as much of a, a problem as, as not having fences there.
Yeah, we see that a lot. They get a lot of debris caught on them. It's hard to maintain the weeds around that area without spraying a lot of herbicide, which we really don't like to do. So, that's, they become a maintenance problem for us, or for the, for the property owners.
Now, the one, the one difference I see there in, in, at Walmart, they've got a, a drywall built on the one side at the parking lot in order to allow them to retain that parking lot and not, and so that, I can see, needs to be protected, because somebody could just step off the end of that or something. But I, yeah, and I, I almost see the fences, if, if we had fences around those ponds with these two projects, that they could be as much of a hazard with kids trying to climb on them and get over them, or, you know, or whatever. And so, it all, you know, and I, I think the depth of the pond is about seven feet, the, or not the pond, but the detention basin. It's about a seven-foot difference, fairly gradual slope. It seems, to me, it seems appropriate to do it in that way, to not put a fence around it. That is my thought.
Other comments from the Planning Commissioners?
Oh, dear. So, what about the big pond that isn't on the site? I understand now that it's part of the drainage for University Estates. I wonder who's responsible if somebody falls into that pond, even if there are stones on the side of it. Not that I want anyone to fall in.
Well, if I may, let me, I'd like to share screen with everyone, because I did get a comment from Planning Commissioner Austin Phillips on this, and I'll read as I'm showing you this, because he, he raised this question, if you recall, at the last Planning Commission meeting. So, I'm going to share screen now. And hopefully, you are looking at a pond of some type with riprap around it. And he said, he wanted to add his opinion, "There are plenty of examples throughout Ohio, especially in golf course communities where ponds exist without barriers. Based on the project, the developer has made it clear that this is not their property," which I believe that to be accurate, "that is not part of the parcels."
George, I need your help.
And also, that, so he goes on, "So, I do not believe that we, you know, can or should force this on the developer," which I also agree with, that this is, we're talking separate parcels, this being part of, of University Estates.
What happened?
I'm over here. Go in again.
No. All right, did you hit this one?
I don't know.
I'm a little problem. Get into that, just to see when it gets you.
Nancy, you may want to mute while you're working through any.
Are that my technical difficulties again?
Your technical difficulties.
You know, I'm seriously concerned about the pond. I don't care who owns it. I think the city will bear the responsibility from a lawsuit, maybe. I'm not a lawyer, thank God, but, you know, that's one of the things that I was worried about. Furthermore, somebody, we, I'd like to know how many kids are going to be in the building, hypothetically, and how it's going to be protected. I mean, it started out being a cow-watering place, and then it graduated into this new facility that's used. And I don't think it's WODA's problem at all. I think it's a problem that goes back to University Estates and before almost everybody's time except mine. So.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Any other comments from David Riggs or from the WODA group? City Planner? No, okay. Therefore, I think we're in a position to vote on this, to move this forward. Do I have a motion to approve?
Steve, before we start, the developer, now, this I would hold him responsible for. He was going to tell us how many children would be hypothetically in such a development. Maybe it's a non-problem. Maybe I'm just creating a problem because the water's there. I don't know. But could you, could you review that for me? I wasn't here last week, or I was here, but I wasn't here. I want to know, I would like to know. If it were 55 and older, man, I'd be all for it. I'd vote it right now. But I would like to know what is going to happen. I mean, go ahead.
This is Tom at WODA, Cooper. So, I requested information from the management company, and I'm going to read you the email they sent me. "On advice of council, we are not able to speculate on the age demographic of the resident population at the developments because of the provisions of fair housing laws." So, unfortunately, we're not allowed to comment. I can tell you, fair housing laws were prohibited by the fair housing laws from discriminating against families with children.
I don't think I would want them to discriminate at all. I would just like the children, if there are any, to be protected against this thing in their area. I live on a road that's very busy. It was busy even when I moved here, and my kids could never go into the street. By the same token, 682 and the pond are a potential hazard for this, little girl, little girls and boys that live there. Now, if you, if you all think I'm overreacting, tell me, but I think it's a serious issue. Maybe I, anyway. I don't mean for you, Tom Simons, I mean for my fellow Planning Commissioners. Steve, John. This isn't a fair housing issue, by the way. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I just couldn't stop. All right.
So, you know, I am not, certainly, there's an issue there, no question about it. But I, I will say this, when I was little, growing up, I left in the morning on my bicycle and went places and played and didn't come home until dinnertime, or lunchtime, depending on when, when, you know, when I got hungry or whatever, and I needed to be home by dinnertime. And, you know, I, I looked out for myself, and I got into trouble, and I got into, you know, and I, you know, I got into trouble. But I feel like it's something that the parents and the children need to take some responsibility for. I don't know, and I know in the end, Nancy, you're right, that probably if somebody were to drown in that pond, a child would have drowned in that pond, the city would become liable. They, they certainly would be in, in a lawsuit. But I, you know, one, I agree that, that they, you know, they don't own the pond, they can't do, you know, there's, you know, they, they can't do anything about that, they can't do anything about the traffic necessarily. I guess I'm not as concerned about it at this point. I hope I don't find myself in a position of regretting that, that feeling.
I don't think that it's a problem for, that I can relate to so much, because I got on my bike and rode in the school grounds, but that's okay. I'm concerned about maybe closing the Johnson Road exit, and how much more traffic will be on this road as access to the high school. And no, and there's been no discussion of that at all, not that it's John Simons or WODA's problem, it's our problem. There's a lot of stuff going on in that area, a lot of things that may potentially be a problem. I, I don't know. I travel a lot with the food pantry to places that are children's places, and I agree, those kids are tough, and some of them can take care of themselves, I just don't know. And in the absence of not knowing, I get a little nervous.
Let me kind of, at least lay out my thought process on this. You know, I, I know that the West State Street Park does not have a fence all along the park abutting the river, you know? The, the soccer fields out on East State Street don't have a fence along the river to keep a child chasing their soccer ball and slipping into the river either. You know, at what point do we start putting fences everywhere if that's what we're talking about in this meeting? I, I, I'm, I'm listening, and I'm very cognizant of the conversation that's going on before us right now. And again, I would also claim that this is with the two parcels that WODA is bringing forward to us, that, that, that this, the pond is a, the detention pond is a separate issue altogether.
Again, I, I'm not supporting putting a fence around it or requiring the developer to do that, but I did raise the issue about them having gotten permission to get on the property that is owned by the, by some other entity, because they're moving the spillway. And that was one of the reasons I, I brought that up, is that they could get permission. I, and again, I'm not sitting here advocating for them to do that, but I don't know.
Thank you, John. Is there some way they could spill some of that water out of that pond? Rather than putting a, a barrier around it, which I don't think would work at all. Kids are kids.
Right.
Can you send it down Factory Creek? Better yet, could you send it to the Hocking River?
Yeah, sooner than it would, because I'm assuming that's the stormwater coming off of that development down the road. So, send some more of it out of there sooner and retain less. That, you know, that's an interesting thought.
I'm not trying to plan as we sit here, but I just would like some resolution that feels a little more comfortable, so I can, I mean, I'm all for WODA doing this. I just wish we didn't have that cow, cow pond, which became the University Estates pond in the same place. And the big unknown about the traffic is also there. I'll have to see if I can decide to vote for it.
Well, let me, let me share one other water feature that does exist in the city of Athens that does not have a fence around it, is the Sells Park Pond, which is frequented by a large number of people.
I was not advocating for a fence, by the way. Not even on this one, I want it out of there.
Remember, Bane, I'm just throwing that out there as another.
I know. You can, it's a good, it's a good argument. Let's see, is there anything else I wanted to talk about? No.
All right. Should we call the questions?
One, one more quick thing. We did, we did talk about the traffic there, and, you know, I'm hoping that the city planner and, and in consultation with ODOT will continue to look at that, because there is a lot of traffic there, particularly at the beginning of the day and business day, and at the end of the business day, there's an awful lot of traffic in that particular area, but.
John and Nancy, to your points about traffic in 682 and the closing of Johnson Road, a lot of us, and I'll speak on behalf of the Regional Planning Commission as chair of that, that body, we did communicate directly with ODOT, expressing concerns about the closing of Johnson Road, especially with the, the removal of the option to turn right onto 33 from Johnson Road to come back into town. We communicated that to Johnson Road and asked for additional, or excuse me, we communicated that to ODOT. Their plan right now is to continue forward with what they've been saying, which is to close that intersection entirely. We've asked for additional planning from ODOT. We're talking about state routes here, of course, inside and outside the city of Athens and on incorporated town area of the plains. They, at this point, they, they are comfortable with the amount of data that they've collected and the study that they've done. There's a lot of us that disagree with, with them on that, including our, our county engineer, Jeff Maiden, but at this point, they're moving forward with their plans, and they, they don't believe that there is a significant, or any impact, I should say, and I don't like, I don't, I don't want to speak on ODOT's behalf, but they don't believe that the closure will significantly impact traffic flows on 682 at this point. There will be some changes. I agree with you, Nancy, there, we should expect that there will be more high school traffic on 682. That's probably a good thing, as opposed to putting, putting teenagers on 33 to make a left onto Johnson, but it will, it will shift things to other, it'll shift risk, I guess, a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're going to continue those conversations. Nancy, you.
Do you need a letter?
We're doing our best. You know, there was, they had a public hearing, and there was a lot of significant opposition to that, and a lot of these concerns were expressed in the public hearing that ODOT hosted back in March, and I don't believe there's been any changes since.
Okay. Hearing no other comments or questions. Do I have a motion to approve case number 21-01, Crenshaw Green Apartments? I have a motion from Chief Tom Pyle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Nancy Bane. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly.
Opposed, same sign? All right, the case has been adopted or approved. Case number 21-02, this is Tyler Park Apartments at 8462, Lurig Road. Again, Director Riggs, you would like to quickly introduce this?
Yeah, this is the, the second development, Tyler Park Apartments on Lurig Road. This actually accesses onto the township road. As we talked last time, we've got approval through the township to access that parcel onto, onto Lurig Road, and comments were the same as the last, the last one. We have a few minor comments from some of our staff. We think those can all be addressed easily by WODA Group.
Questions or comments from the Planning Commissioners? Any comments from the WODA group? Or the city planner? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve case number 21-02, Tyler Park Apartments?
I'll, I'll move that, we do that.
I have a, a motion from Mr. Kautowski, and a second from Chief Pyle. Any, any conversation to have about this discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? It is unanimous, and that passes. Thank you. Communications. Communications from the city planner and the director of development and code enforcement. Starting with you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I think just one or two items this morning, or this afternoon, I guess, just additional information relating to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission has a role to play in zoning recommendations or zoning changes for that plain zoning district. I don't think many of us were really aware of that when this all went through, but the Regional Planning Commission needs to make a recommendation on any zoning change applications. We had our first one of those in the last week. There was a public hearing, I believe, that the Township Trustees held last night for a rezoning from what was designated as an R1 zone in the plains along Lee Master Road at Connet, from R1 to R3, looking at some housing options there. Other than that, just continuing to do a lot of different work for the city. I did want to, it looks like my intern Lauren is on this call. I did just want to publicly thank Lauren for her time working for the city of Athens. She'll be graduating in a couple weeks. She's done an outstanding job in less than ideal circumstances with everybody being, working from home and not being able to see each other and have conversations face-to-face, but grateful for the work Lauren's done, and that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. And I, I would be remiss not to add to that about Lauren Connor. She's done phenomenal work in looking at racial equity here in the city of Athens. So, Lauren, thank you for all your work. Much needed and much appreciated.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I really love working with the city. It's been great. Really thankful to have this opportunity in a pandemic.
We were lucky to have you. Director Riggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. I really don't have anything this afternoon for the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. I, looking around, I don't see anybody else with us unless I am wrong about that. Scott Thompson, who I know is on right now, but there's an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Do we have any, any attendees, Scott?
We have one attendee, but there's no hand raise, so I'm assuming nobody else is going to comment.
Okay. The attendee did say, "Nothing from me today." Okay. Thank you. Announcements and other business? Anything from the Planning Commission in terms of other announcements? I have one announcement, and that is that the April 19th through the end of the week, through Friday, is Athens beautification, Athens, it is beautification, I guess, to where people can take out to the curb on the day in which you're recycling and, and refuse is picked up, you can put out unlimited numbers of bags of trash as its spring cleanup. That's the term for it, the Athens Spring Cleanup. So, just as a reminder, if you have items that are larger than is normally taken out to the curb, i.e. a sofa or a recliner or some other object that cannot be taken to a place such as the restore, is non, non-serviceable, they can also be brought out, but they, you need to call Engineering and Public Works to have them schedule a time to pick it up, and there will be a special haul rate of $15 per cubic yard for larger items. And then there also is the dumpsters that will be located down at the city service garage at 387 West State Street, and you can bring scrap metal or other items down to those dumpsters. You do need to have a photo ID and proof of residency. Most people will just use their utility bill to show that. I believe, Director Riggs, they can also contact your office to, for that. I could be wrong on that, but I think it is 592-3306.
That's correct.
And, and drop off items down there. So, take advantage of Athens Spring Cleanup Week to clean out your attic, your basement, your garage. Hopefully, you're cleaning up your yards already, but you know what I'm saying. Other than that, I don't have any other announcements, and therefore, I am going to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? So, a second from. Second from Chief Pyle. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.